We'll go ahead and call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly and City Council Joint Work Session. This is Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, at 6:30 PM, and we are in the Assembly Chambers. The Borough is chairing this meeting. The first item on the agenda is Citizens Comments, and the local number is 907-486-3231. The toll-free number is 855-492-9202. Ask you to sign in, turn the mic on, and state your name for the record on there. So anybody in the audience wish to come forward at this time, please do.
Chris French, Community Development Director for the Kodiak Island Borough. I just wanted to, a couple of things to make both the City Council and the Borough Assembly aware that the Multi-Jurisdiction, Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan Update Document will be going before the Borough Assembly at its regular meeting on March 6th. Once that is conducted and the Assembly makes its approval of that document, it will be going to the city's jurisdictions within the Borough, including the City of Kodiak. And we do hope that the City does review and adopt that plan as well as other cities within the Borough, and we also want to make sure that we thank everyone who participated in the plan update process. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Chris Burns, talking about short-term housing. I got a short-term rental in my house, and it helps me pay my Borough property tax. It helps me, and the city takes the tax out of it. And it's a small business, and I don't get it. Affordable housing is a problem. It's a problem all over this country, maybe in the world. And it isn't like there's a bunch of corporations bought a bunch of houses in Kodiak and, as you know, like doing some crazy deal. It's just a bunch of people that got small business and help pay bills. And the house I live in, I paid for it after a number of years. The original house I bought, I tore down and rebuilt the place because when I got into the house on the property I'm currently at, I had to get an owner-finance deal because that's just how you do it. This problem's been in Kodiak since I was a kid, and I just don't get why city government, Borough government even wants to get involved in this. And I've never seen any solutions to it anywhere I've read about in the country. It's just like some kind of bleeding-heart deal, you know? It's like, okay, people got problems, but money's different. Like $10,000 in 1970 is a lot, might even be the same as what a house costs today. I don't know. You could buy a house in 1970 for $10,000 in this town, and there was a problem then. So I just hope you guys don't come in and do something crazy with, you know, under the guise of affordable housing, like, because my house isn't going to come on the market and people aren't going to move into it. It'll just be, I won't have the little bit of money I get in the summer from renting it out when I'm not here because I'm fishing in the summer. So it's just like, you know, it's just sitting around like a stranded asset, I guess. So that's why I got into it. I got this time, people want to come here, and it's mainly tourists, sport fishermen, people that spend money in this town. And so I just don't get it. I just hope you guys think about this a little bit, and that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Any phone calls at this time?
No.
Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward.
Hello, my name's Dan Rohr. Thank you mayors and Assembly and Council for the opportunity to speak. I want to speak about short-term housing. For the record, I don't own any short-term housing, so this doesn't have a direct impact on me from that vantage point. I am very, very concerned that it's a knee-jerk reaction to a misunderstanding about where our housing crisis comes from, your terms, not mine in regards to the crisis. But if you look in our community, we have a demographic problem that we're not able to fix, right? And I don't think we should fix. If I look from my house, so from my house, my house originally had five people in it. It now has two. My neighbor's house had six people in it. It now has two. My neighbor on the other side is a duplex. It had six people. It now has one gentleman on one side, one on the other side. Across the street was four. It's now two. The house behind that was six. It's now two. And the house behind that was five, and it's now two. If I go up Spruce Cape, or you go on Cliffside or Parkside, any of the older subdivisions in our community, including the Aleutian Homes, you will find that almost without exception, even if I go around this table, even as I go around this table, there's literally probably 40 less people in housing in our community today that's just represented from your housing, mine, and a couple other peoples out here. What it is, is we have encouraged people to age in place, which is absolutely wonderful, and I appreciate that. But when I was a kid growing up, I knew one person with a grandparent in this town. Now my kids and my grandkids, they all have grandparents. Thank you, by the way, for really promoting that in our community. But guess what? That demographic reality across our country creates a housing shortage. And so the only way to combat that is, is you have to open up more land and more opportunity for development in our community to build more houses. If we don't do that, then yes, housing prices are going to continue to go up, and it's just literally a function of every single road you go up, there are less people living in each house just because my kids all moved out. I moved out of my parents' house, et cetera, et cetera. So I think you guys get the point. I just don't think we should be limiting short-term housing. I think there's a lot of other things that are impacting it more, that we can do something about that doesn't harm people's small businesses. Last point, it is interesting to me that, notice the people that are up here to talk about it are not the hotel owners in town. If we really, really had a problem with this, I would think our hotel owners would be here pounding this podium saying, "You have to stop this. It's killing my local business." It's not, because they recognize they don't have enough room to house all of the visitors that want to come to our community. And economically, that visitor influx in the summer is really beneficial to us. So I don't have 100% solution by any means to our housing issue in our community. I just don't think limiting short-term housing is the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak, please do.
Hello, my name's Alyssa Abikire. It's hard to follow someone so well-spoken. I'm going to be talking about something that's a little off-topic, but is very important to me. It's the swimming pool here in town. The swimming pool is used by a lot of different people, for open swim, for, I can't think of the aquatics, water aquatics. And I'm the president of Kodiak Kingfishers. I've been on the Board of Kingfishers for the last eight years, president for two, and I'm just here to let you know how important the pool is, and also Kingfishers, what we do. We're a nonprofit. We've been around since the 70s, I've been told, 501(c)(3), and we help children learn to swim competitively from age five to age 18. We have a lot of pool time that we really enjoy, and we appreciate the swimming pool. We have wonderful coaches. We have a really wonderful program. We're USA certified, which means all the times are nationally recognized. For children who want to get college scholarships, you know, their times will count in other places. We work hard as Kingfishers to have those certifications, at least 30 hours of volunteer time every official has, so that we can run those swim meets up to the standards of USA swimming in addition to the Alaska standards. We provide lessons for Levels III and IV. The city does Lessons I and II. We take over with III and IV, and then the children, if they want to keep swimming, can come into Kingfishers. We like to have lessons about four times a year. We do our best to provide those for the community. I wanted to just say also, we do a lot to support the high school swim. We run all of their swim meets, and even though we might not have swimmers in the water, Kodiak Kingfishers takes responsibility to run and officiate all of the swim meets for high school, including regions. We just had 13 visiting teams come to our island, and we ran an exceptional meet, very safe, very efficient. It was great. And a lot of that was Kingfishers working together with the high school to make that happen. Oh, and with that comes a lot of equipment. We have touchpads, we have starter system, we have speakers. We fundraise for all that equipment. We maintain it. We're very happy to support the high school program. I just wanted to make sure you were all aware that we do that. The last thing is that we recognize that the pool needed new starter blocks. Those are the competitive blocks that divers jump off of. We wrote a grant. Mattson gave us $17,000, and we put in $10,000 of our own cumulative savings that we have acquired over the last few years. So we're going to get new starter blocks hopefully by March, and they're going to look awesome in the pool, and they're going to be safer and just a lot better for our swimmers. The last thing is that we have a swim meet every month for Kingfishers. The next one is Saturday. Please come. It's free at 10 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming forward and keeping the pool situation on the forefront.
Hello, my name is Sandra West. I'm not going to talk about housing or the pool. You know what I'm going to talk about. That's right. So we just got a report from the U.S. Commerce Department on outdoor recreation economics. Now, there's a lot of different parts about economics. I am not an economist, but I heard a guy talk. It was a little bit mind-blowing to me because the outdoor recreation economy of Alaska is growing faster than the U.S. economy on a whole, and faster than the Alaska economy on a whole. In fact, in 2023, it hit $3.1 billion, which is the first time it's gone over $3 billion. I tried to send to the clerks, oh, you got it, outdoor recreation economy in Alaska. Yeah, it's amazing to me.
All the members of the council and the Borough Assembly have it.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much. I was late, as usual. But it's just amazing to me, and I just want to add a little bit more here. Not only is the outdoor recreation economy growing in the state, we hope that it's growing in Kodiak, all right? Two things that are happening. The Kodiak Mountain Series is being put on under Island Trails Network. 100 people have signed up to come to Kodiak and run. They signed up in an hour and 40 minutes. It was full. This is the first time that we're running this. It's three mountains in three days. So there's going to be 100 people showing up, plus their support here in Kodiak. Runners like to eat food. Sometimes they drink beer. They need a place to sleep. So that is a big boom for the economy of Kodiak. Not only that, but the Outdoor Alliance of Alaska is going to come to Kodiak and do a conference in August, I think it is. That's over 100 people that are coming. Usually, I've met with them in Fairbanks and in Anchorage, and now they're coming to Kodiak because they want to come to Kodiak. And so I just am excited about where we're going. This town, people do want to come to Kodiak. They want to spend the extra money, and they want to come to Kodiak. And of course, it'd be great. We get a Kodiak Short Trail, right? And so on and so forth. We improve our walkways and our biking safety and accessibility, all good stuff. Anyway, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Sandra. Anyone else wishing to come forward under Citizens Comments here? Please do at this time.
Hi, Robert Lindsay. I've spoke for the Borough before, and if you want to talk off-topic, I've got off-topic, and I'm sorry. Have been trying to get with the City Council. Loved our presentation of the Borough. Sorry you missed it. I come here as a sixth-generation fisherman, maybe. What a place to live. I mean, you know, the great land, the last frontier, the king crab capital of Alaska, right? Shrimp you could sink your boat with. I mean, and there was always salmon, right? If nothing else panned out. And I mean, the gent venture days, that, I ran over that school of pollock in the shallow, 30 miles long, 15 miles wide, 30 fathoms deep, no end. But, you know, it's just not happening anymore. And we have spent a lot of money. Fishing game has done the best job they can. We've got fisheries enhancements, we've got hatcheries. In the last decade, I've lived through four salmon disasters. I just closed on the sale of my Prince William Sound Permit. I took a bath on that thing. It was like, I don't know. There's an obvious problem, and most of us don't know what it, nobody really knows for sure. But in 2016, after I went and took the big bath on salmon, I just started digging. And anybody who knows me knows I'm persistent. I mean, I'm persistent. I ask a lot of questions, and I got this, as Duncan says, I got this bulldozer personality. And so that led me to a man named Russ George. And Russ George is the man that did the Haida Gua project in 2012. And until he fell out of favor, primarily Greenpeace, the State of Alaska credited Russ George with $700 million of salmon in 2013 that we wouldn't have caught otherwise. Pretty much all the fisheries just closed up the plants, over limit, and they just had no more room. So I started talking to Russ, just how we could redo what he did in the Haida Gua project. And essentially, it is ocean restoration through plankton enhancement, and we think that's where the problem is. I think I've had some conversations with Scott about this in the past, and quite a number of people I talked to, and it's been a catch-22. We need to study it more, but you've got to do it, study it. Maybe do a small one near the beach. Well, it doesn't work that way. You've got to go big or go home. Russ did 100 tons of iron on the open ocean in the Haida Eddy, and the following year is the year that Fraser River came back with 74 million reds. It was off the charts, and I am not kidding you. We can show you a lot of things, and we're looking forward to an invitation to come before the City Council. The reason I come before you now, because we have the opportunity, we have been working with the state for the last four years, given testimony a good number of times. Louise has us back on the docket to any day now go before the House Fisheries Commission again, and all we really need is the support. We would like to get, just work with you and draft a position of support. We have
Go ahead, Rob.
We have backing from the highest level, waiting for our prepared plan. It's not just Alaska-centric. We've been, we have input to the task of putting together the plan for ocean restoration for the United States and the waters of interest for the United States. Russ is going to follow up. He's the man with the plan, and it's a lot to digest, but we have, we can provide any of you all the information you want and probably more some. And if you just give Russ a few minutes here, he can kind of lay out what he's done and what we hope to do, and then hopefully we'll work together and get something going because I think we've got about nine years pushing on this wheel, and it's finally starting to move.
And we have a caller on the phone. Maybe that's Russ. Irene? Okay.
You're on the line. Please.
Okay, well, wait a minute. Is there anyone else wishing to come forward and speak under Citizens Comments? Yeah. We lost a caller.
Hi, Joseph Delgano. Welcome to our land. I see that as treating you well. I hope that you treat the land and waters as well as you are being treated by it. It's been about 40 years since I lived in Yuzinkie. I remember back then, I could go out in our cove and look down into water, and there'd be 30 or 40 balls of king crab walking through the cove, through Yuzinkie Narrows. That's the story of the fisheries all over in Alaska. We could go three minutes away from my house to catch shrimp. We don't see that anymore. In fact, our ocean is almost dead. One of the problems we have is with the European immigrants' idea of management. You guys don't seem to worry about anything until it's at a tipping point. You look at the problem you're facing right now with the land. I mean, there's no pre-planning with your race, it seems to me. If you look at your history from the East Coast to here, it's a trail of destruction, the land, the waters, the fisheries, the animals, you know? For some reason, it's hard to learn. I heard somebody say this is the last frontier. It's being destroyed. The draggers are killing everything that's underneath them, you know, the management. You don't have good managers. You need to get more native people, more indigenous people. It doesn't matter where they're indigenous to, which country they're indigenous to. Indigenous people have a connection with the land. European immigrants, you can't see that. Look at your history. It's genocide and theft. All the riches you have, all the land that you own, it's all come from someone else. You're supposed to use it wisely. All of the leaders that are making decisions are supposed to think about the decision they're making and how it's going to affect the seven generations beyond yours. Right now, decisions are being made for the sake of money. How much money can I make? How much money can my family make? How much money can the big businesses make? And that supersedes the needs and wants of the people. I think that the way to judge the greatness of a country is not by how many rich people you have, it's by how few poor people you have, and the way that they're treated. You look at the way that America treats its poor. It's astounding that people can call themselves Christians with that. One more thing I would like to say, though, is with the disaster stuff. I did this in Yuzinkie. We got these tsunami escape routes, and one person asked a question, "What about the trees?" We have to rethink that because if you look at all the roads, everywhere I go, I look at how many trees can possibly fall between me and my house, because that's where I'm going. If I'm in an earthquake, I'm heading right to my home, getting my family there. But how many trees am I going to have to go over and around? That's something that we must consider.
Thank you, Joe. We have a caller.
You are now answering a call from the queue.
You're on the line. Please state your name for the record.
And turn off your radio.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, yeah. My name is Russ George, and, oh, sorry.
Russ, I think you have a radio on in the background.
Yeah, I just caught it here. Yeah. My name is Russ George, and my good friend, Rob Lindsay.
We're still getting feedback, Russ?
Are you?
Yeah.
I don't seem to have
Might have to turn the radio off completely.
Let me see here. How about now? Is it there?
We can hear you better right now.
Okay. All right. All right, well, my good friend, Rob Lindsay. Somehow we're getting feedback, aren't we?
Yeah.
Let me see if I got it now. Anyway, Rob
Do you want to call in on your, oh, we're going to try something here. Try it. Try it once now, talking.
Hello? How about now? Is it working?
Yes, it is. Go ahead, Russ.
Okay. Yeah, look at, you know, there's a, a good friend of mine who passed away a long time was one of the top science, salmon scientists in Canada for his whole life, and he used to say, "Who speaks for the fish?" Right? And so that's what I'm here to ask that the Borough stand up and speak for the fish from the Gulf of Alaska, or all of Alaska, because the plankton, the ocean pastures, which are what the plankton is in the ocean, is diminishing, and we know the fish out in the ocean are not doing as well as they used to, you know? Where there are, where there's still big numbers, the fish are shrunk, and they're smaller. So they're clearly, they're clearly hungry. And in many cases, the fish are disappearing in numbers as well. And right now, with the new Trump administration, there is a fabulous opportunity, in fact, an invitation, to get the federal government to take on the task of restoring the oceans. And they understand back in Washington, D.C., that Alaska is 60% of the fishing industry in the United States, so, and that it's been a terrible fishery crisis. So the plan is to try to, you know, convince them, the administration, to undertake this ocean restoration work. And fortunately, I've been invited to help write that plan. And of course, what they need the most is grassroots support, right? You know, politicians in Washington want to hear that people want them to do something. So perhaps we could, we could work with the Borough there and explain this more thoroughly and get the Borough to provide a resolution or a letter of support saying, "Yeah, let's get on with the work of restoring the ocean and bringing back the fish." So that's the message.
Thank you, Russ. I appreciate that. And that'll be something we'll look at on each of our bodies as far as a resolution. So we'll move on to, are there any other citizens that like to make Citizens Comments tonight here before we get started on the agenda items? Any other callers? Nova?
Mr. Mayor and elected officials, and Mayor Branson, I would like to note for the record that we have received an email, and we distributed it to everyone. It's from Ms. Brandesh Wontez. Although she requested that it be read to the record, that rule applies to the Assembly. It's in your code. However, I'm not sure about the rules of the council, so I'm just going to acknowledge it and let her know
We've received it.
...that we've received it, and it has been distributed. Thank you.
Thank you, Nova. No other phone calls?
No.
Okay. No other Citizens Comments. We'll move on to the agenda items. The first one is Kodiak Emergency Preparedness Update. Amy, would you like to?
Good evening, mayors, council, and Assembly members. I'm excited to tell you about the progress the City of Kodiak and the Kodiak Island Borough have made in the area of emergency management. If you haven't gotten the chance to meet Rich Gonzalez yet, I'm going to take a moment to point him out for you. Rich, this is when you stand up, and we can all embarrass you. There he is. Thank you. I want you to be able to recognize him as you see him walking around. He's been everywhere throughout the building, the police department. He's done a really good job meeting his stakeholders. He hit the ground running, and he's taking time to reach out to more people than have been before. As a representative of the Borough, I'm really happy to report that he's already reached out to all of our village public safety officers to learn the history of engagement with each of them in time of emergency. There's a three-page memo from Rich dated January 21st, 2025. It's to the acting city manager that outlines his activities up to that date. It's in your packet tonight. Also in your packet tonight, you'll find an agreement for emergency management services between the Kodiak Island Borough and the City of Kodiak. This is the document that lays out the desire of both municipalities to coordinate and implement an area-wide emergency management program. Each entity has agreed to pay 50% of the payroll cost for the position, and the agreement period is for the next five years. Next in the packet, you'll see an example of the weekly situation report that Rich is giving. The one included is dated January 27th to February 2nd. You'll see that it covers the status of the Emergency Operations Center, notes about the weather, and any relative information pertinent to terrorism, maritime security, or elevated alert status at the Coast Guard Base. There is also information that includes community events that you should know about, covering a variety of sources, and it's sure to be a useful fool. And it's sure to be a useful tool as soon as we move into the year, especially tourism with the cruise ships. I also want to inform the group that is the intent of the city of Kodiak to have Mr. Gonzalez fill the emergency services director role. This change will require an update to both city and borough code. Kodiak City Code 2.23.040 has references to the emergency service director and says that the position shall be the city of Kodiak city manager. Mirroring this code, KIBC Code 2.110.040 also says the emergency services director shall be the city of Kodiak manager. To be able to update both municipalities' codes, it falls to the emergency services council, which is also in that same section. It shall be the duty of the council to review and recommend for adoption by the city council and assembly ordinances and resolutions necessary for the implementation of disaster emergency services plans and agreements, which is mirrored in Kodiak City Code 2.23.030D. The city of Kodiak has their lawyer working on a code update to not only change the designation of who is the emergency service director, but also to start work on the update of other things that were discovered in the after-action report after COVID, which leads us to the final thing in your packet, the after-action report. This report is the last four pages of your packet for this item.
Thank you, Amy. Basically, we had wanted to look at, as part of that after-action report in changing the code, one of the problems that we had and one of the reasons two of us on the assembly, James Turner and myself, voted no on the emergency declaration, is there was no mechanism to get us out of it. And that still needs to be changed. It needs to be reviewed at least every 30 days. So I can't wait to see that stuff come before us. Pat?
Okay, let me figure out this microphone. Well, there's more to do than just that than, I know Scott, you and I have talked about that and that's important. Also, it's the makeup of the ESC with the new emergency contact person that we have. And that is a great step forward. But when you read the plan from the follow-up of COVID, you will find things that need to be changed pretty readily. So that, the makeup of the ESC and what you're saying, all of that needs to be reviewed and in a timely manner. So I hope that Richard could call us together and as the present makeup is and that we could discuss and review and get these codes changed.
Yeah, to each body.
Yes.
I agree. So anything anyone else would like to say at this time? Jared and then Larry?
One thing I would like the ESC to consider, and you know, declaring a little conflict of interest here, but including local radio a little bit more in the planning process. I know that the group wants to limit membership and I don't think we would, we should consider membership. But under the requirements for membership in the ESC, it has to be an organization or a group that is, has access to resources. And communication is, I think, an underseen resource when it comes to emergencies and emergency planning. And so I would just like to put that recommendation out there that I believe, yeah, KMXT should be somewhere in that conversation or somewhere in that planning, not as membership, not advocating for that. But I'd like to see that also included maybe a little bit more going forward for our, you know, emergency services purpose that we have at the organization.
Thank you, Jared. Larry?
Just a couple of comments. I think as a school administrator, I dealt with my first tsunami warning in maybe 88 or 89 and we were really unprepared. The Lions Club moved to the top of the middle school and drank beer. The city released all their prisoners into Kodiak High School. One of the, you were here, Pat. And one of the local car dealerships moved all their cars up here that clogged up the parking lot. And the list goes on. And we had close to 700 people to manage at the high school. It was a lot of fun and I mean that really. It was quite an interesting challenge. And then I go on from there. Multiple tsunami warnings. Many times, we never received any word at all from the command central. That's not a complaint. It's a matter of the hierarchy and the organization of the plan. Everybody was doing a good job, but we're housing and taking care of hundreds of people and many who do not speak any language. And the school district is, you know, we take care of housing everybody and feeding them and giving them water and calming them down and trying to find ways to communicate with people who frankly come from nations where tsunamis kill a lot of people and they're scared to death and they have no idea what's going on. And I think, you know, the school district has, all of our buildings meet high seismic standards. We have food resources. I'm talking like I'm still there. I'm not. We can house hundreds and hundreds, thousands of people if we had to. We have electrical generation. If the power goes down, we have oil reserves. We're in close communication with our rural sites. Sometimes we are the ones that notify the villages that they need to, because we have satellite and direct communication. This is not a complaint and I'm going back many years. During the COVID, I was invited to sit in on the meetings and I really have been nothing but impressed with the people that were doing their job there. But I was just sort of hanging in there. And North Star became a hospital set up. Main Elementary was taken over, you know, as whatever, you know, the, whatever, the headquarters. We facilitated and took care of many people. But yet, even in the evaluation of the COVID, the Kodiak district was not involved, or at least they weren't listed in the notes as even giving input. And because we are the first line, we had the schools open before, almost before the sirens come on. We have people up there, we're paying them, we're managing. And again, sometimes we'll get a call a couple hours later, you know? And I'm saying this because I think the communication person is here, but I didn't. And I noticed in the notes that there was inference that not everybody can be a part of that council. A lot of people want to be. But I really believe that the school district, someone from the school district, doesn't have to be the super, but somebody from the school district needs to be a part of that team because frankly, we're carrying the entire load. You have a tsunami alert, you have a bunch of people at the fire department. Who's taking care of all the people in the school district? And so my point is that as they develop this plan, I really believe that you need to have a well-trained person who is working directly with the incident commander to make things work. And it hasn't worked well in the past. I think the district has done a good job, but we do carry on so many functions and have so many assets available to the community that they really need to be a part of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Pat and then John?
Well, Larry, you sat in on our pandemic meetings with the ESC and I think it's a given. We're grateful, we were grateful to have the school district there. It was a major part and that's a gap that's been there. We know it needs to be representative as part of that group. Also, what we might think about as well, and I don't want to get into the weeds with this because we know it's going to be examined, are healthcare providers as well. Because they were over here, you know, we talk about tsunamis, but we also had a pandemic and we need to be prepared for that. So it's a given. The school district is very important. Who knows why they weren't in the beginning when this code was established? But absolutely, they need to be part of it.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. With all the pandemic, the city was able to get CARES Act funds to purchase a warehouse up there behind Safeway. So I think that their warehouse is currently stocked with carts and other kind of dry goods type supplies. But what we don't have, and we've put on our federal capital projects list is just a line item, no funding, is food security. And I would say something like this really highlights the need to have a cold storage. I know there's a cold storage being built in town, but I would suggest we need either a public or a public-private partnership to create a cold storage that we can actually have these additional food supplies available anytime for any emergency. So I'd just like to see us elevate that to more than just a talking point. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on this? Beau?
Thank you. And there's a lot of information in this update and I appreciate the amount of communication that's taking place and re-establishing how emergencies are handled. I would encourage, I don't see it, and forgive me if it's not in here, I don't see anything about reaching out to any of the leadership in the Filipino community. Because when I think about emergencies here in Kodiak and when these sirens go off, people start scrambling, I personally jump on the radio and wait for some updates from KMXT. I can't hear what those sirens are saying. I know they're going off. I don't know what they're communicating. I know that that is meant as a means for emergency personnel to communicate to the public and mitigate the panic a bit. But I would encourage those who are involved in this, certainly Mr. Gonzalez, to reach out to leadership in the Filipino community. They feel that they have adequate representation, that their, members of their community who typically rely on their community leadership to disseminate information, are we bridging that gap? That's something I feel that we could improve, not just in this scenario here, but as both of our municipalities work towards what the future looks like. There's certainly a demographic that's underrepresented in almost every meeting I've been to. So I would encourage increased communication for all members of the community.
Anyone else like to speak? Then we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is short-term rentals discussion. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Kodiak Island Borough Assembly has recognized that there are several reasons that are leading to a shortage of affordable housing in our region. One of the reasons is likely the use of housing for short-term rentals. The assembly has had several conversations and work sessions about short-term rentals in which several ideas have been discussed. Items such as a licensing program, a cap on how many the region should have, a moratorium on new short-term rentals, et cetera. The assembly realizes that no changes can be made without working with the city of Kodiak to determine what, if any, policies would be beneficial to both municipalities. In your packet tonight, you will find a map indicating the locations of both lodges and short-term rentals, a more detailed map of short-term rentals inside of the city of Kodiak and the Kodiak Island Borough Fire Protection Area 1, a detailed map of short-term rentals and lodges in the Bell's Flats and South Road System area, and finally, a chart that shows the total count of short-term rentals and lodges in different areas throughout the region.
Thank you, Amy. Who would like to lead off? Larry and then Dave?
Initially, when I was considering taking a close look at short-term rentals, I was pretty pro. But as I've talked to people and thought about it, I'm not so much there because it was mentioned in some of the comments to me. I know Chris talked about it, but when I was a kid and a young adult, there was lots of land available. I built the first house, well, maybe Scott did, but in woodland acres, you know? And that was before any other houses, not woodland acres, I meant all along.
Salif Lane. Mozart Circle.
And that was $20,000 for a lot, you know, $1,000 down basically from land growth. And we had major developers and I really believe the biggest concern is the availability of land. I also believe that zoning regulations that sort of make it difficult to develop a small lot size. One of the changes that's occurred is that young people aren't building these big houses that are all over Kodiak now. They don't want to do that. They're building smaller houses that'll fit on smaller lots. I also would say that one of the things that discourages me every time I want to sell land, it seems to come out, people say, not in my backyard. You know, it's my forest or this, but I don't want to go into that. But just a couple of quick thoughts. I had a call today that was talking about if we said we're going to have a moratorium, everybody that would even think about doing it would get a license, sort of like with rationalization of seafood. I think the example I was giving when they were going to work with Tanner crab, they had 50 licenses. When they indicated they were going to start rationalizing, it went up to 200 almost overnight, just for people to take care of themselves. This was a fisherman that told me that. You know, is the license going to the owner or the house or the renter? What is the license? Who's it for? How do you enforce it? You know, you enforce by increased bureaucracy. But if you can't enforce something adequately, then those people who don't follow the rules win. And overall, people lose faith in the whole concept of a rule that you're going to enforce. You ask people to follow a rule, you need to enforce it. And that means more bureaucracy, which I don't like. And also, we have a lot of people that snowbird. They leave for a while, they come back, the way they have their house taken care of, even their pets, they have short-term rentals. I don't know how we're going to deal with corporate short-term rentals. Could be the hospital, canna, the borough even has short-term rentals. And ultimately, given the fact that we haven't sold, when we sold land in the borough, a couple of years, Scott?
Yes.
Okay. We have a lot of land available, there's a lot of empty lots. I don't know what kind of partnerships we have with some of the major landholders to try to work with them. And have we made it, have we encouraged people to develop land through tax incentives or other ways to develop land? And I'll conclude with, I was at a meeting with, what do you used to call those meetings at the college where people come from the rural forum? And we had a presentation from the feds that said, they have 40-year infrastructure loans, zero interest, that nobody applies for to put in water, sewer, you know? And I sometimes think that we just are stuck in a rut. And so my bottom line is this. I'm sort of reaching a point where I don't think this is going to contribute adequately. And if it does, we should be doing more work on ADUs. We should be working on land and some of these other areas that I've suggested. I don't want to create a bureaucracy that's going to take away the livelihood of many people without knowing exactly how this is going to affect Kodiak and will it really make any difference on the availability of housing in Kodiak? And I apologize if this is slightly different, but one of the things I do try to do is I think everybody here has really listened to what people are saying. And so I've sort of changed my point of view to a certain extent on this. So thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think a couple of points that I'd like to clarify since I've been the one talking about this a lot. I think we're perhaps talking to different people. I'm talking to young families who are leaving this island because they can't find a place to live. I'm talking to teachers who've accepted contracts to teach in our school district who then revoke those contracts because they can't find a place to live. So those are the folks I've been talking to. As far as bureaucracy and licenses, I would say, you know, communities have figured this out. We're not invent, we would not be reinventing a wheel here. A proposed moratorium to get a license would require demonstrating a remittance of bed tax within the previous year. That would keep, you know, this idea of people trying to flood the market with new entries before a date. So a few points I'd like to make. In 2020, the city of Kodiak population was 5,581, down from 6,130 in 2010. Over the same period, the borough population decreased 6.8%. In 2023, the Coast Guard reported their population was the lowest it had been in Kodiak in the preceding 20 years. Despite that, as the Board of Education president, I attended the KEDC Housing Working Group meetings. I watched, as I previously mentioned, the district lose multiple teachers and administrators who accepted contracts and then terminated because of housing availability. As a municipal employee, I've watched our first responders struggle to fill critical vacancies because potential employees cannot find affordable housing. There are myriad factors that influence housing costs. But with a shrinking population, smaller military presence and relatively stagnant wages, the difference I have observed between when I first arrived here in 2012 and now is the exponential increase in short-term rentals. There's research that supports these observations. Following quotes are from academic research papers or news articles citing that research. The conclusion consistent with other independent academic studies, which like this recent paper published by researchers at National Bureau of Economic Research, University of California and the University of Southern California, concluded that on a national basis, every 10% increase in Airbnb listings leads to a 0.42% increase in rents and a 0.76% increase in house prices. Moreover, they find that the effect of Airbnb and smaller zip codes with a larger share of owner-occupiers, a result consistent with absentee landlords taking their homes away from the long-term rental market and listing them on Airbnb. The conclusion drawn from that, given the short-term rental industry has grown by 800%. The conclusion drawn from that, given the short-term rental industry has grown by 800% since 2011, it is therefore not hard to see why people are concerned about the industry's impact on the affordability and availability of long-term rental housing. If a 10% increase in the number of short-term rentals was found to lead to that .42% increase in rent, the actual 800% increase in short-term rental listings since 2011 would be responsible for a 33.6% rent increase over the same time period. In LA County, where 18 of 88 cities passed ordinances putting restrictions on short-term rentals, it reduced listings by 50%, and subsequently, housing prices fell by 2%. Additionally, difference in difference estimates showed that ordinances reduced rental rates by 2% as well. These estimates imply large effects of Airbnb on property values in areas attractive to tourists. They found a 15% increase in their high tourist areas." So this proposal that I've made is a compromise. If I thought our elected leadership had the political will, I would be proposing an owner-occupancy requirement for all short-term rentals, but I recognize the lack of support for a measure that drastic. This is not a knee-jerk reaction. Coastal communities throughout of Alaska have considered and/or passed regulations pertaining to short-term rentals because they recognize the deleterious effect these are having on their local housing inventory. A proposal to license and cap would not eliminate any current operational short-term rentals, just restrict new entrance into the market until such a time as our community economics could support new additional entries. I believe in the concept of a free market. The hoteliers have to meet building codes that increase the cost of construction considerably above residential code, yet they are forced to compete with dwellings designed, inspected, and zoned for residential occupancy, which have instead been converted into unlicensed and unregulated hotel-esque operations. Personally, I fully support homeowners who sublet a room or basement as a short-term rental. I am vehemently opposed to out-of-state investors who own 14 properties in our community when we cannot house young families who want to live on the island. As with any investment, there is a risk in real estate. Unfortunately for our community, the majority of home-owning taxpayers are seeing significant increases in their assessed values as a number of small speculators make enormous profits. This is not the type of risk calculus I support for our community. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Charlie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just speaking off the chest. I know one thing for sure, that we have an extreme shortage of middle-class housing for our needed responders. We're critically short of first responders in our police department, our fire department, our teachers, our nurses, our physical therapists, and where do they go? They don't come here as young people because they're looking at paying 60% of their income just to live here. That's not a bright future for a young person that's starting his career and that. So we need to look at, how can we get housing into these people so that they will want to have a nest egg that can live here and further their desire to live here? One of the things that I see that we're facing is, when I went to a housing forum here, I don't know, it's been a year or less, and one lady was stating how one person in this community was owning seven places of short rentals. Well, if you're not living on the property, then that might be one way that we could handle some of this, is that you can have a short-term rental, but it's got to be, you have to have live in. I don't know what the solution is, to be honest. And I can certainly understand those who need to supplement their income to be able to live here, but if we, if there's, we've got to think out of the box, out of the circle, whatever you want to call it, but we're not facing our critical needs that we're going to have to be facing. Because as the situation in the political world internationally becomes more and more risque as we're looking at things now, and we're in a vital geographical position, you know we're going to have needed demands for additional housing. In regards to the land, the land that's available to sell is, a lot of it is very expensive because of the location of how it is, the geographical location, the, I mean, somehow there's going to have to be some assistance if you're going to put land on the market in these areas where it's extremely expensive to develop because of the high, the topography of the land. I mean, that has a tremendous cost to our construction. So I just, I'm in agreement with a lot, but I don't have a solution, but we've got to do something critical. One of the other items is, if a lot of the people don't want to leave Kodiak, people my age, I mean, where would I go? You know, I mean, I love it here, I don't want to leave here, but there's a lot of people that have houses that, as was stated, there's one or two people in them, you know, and the older people that live in them, they can't afford to keep up the house. So somehow, if there could be structures that are constructed to entice these older residents to move into these places so that the young people could then, I know for a fact this is true because my house needs a lot of improving, and it's the type of fixer-upper that young people should have access to, but they don't because the old people who have these fixer-uppers don't have any place to move to. So that's one possibility that we might look into, I don't know.
Thank you, Charlie. Pat?
So I just think that, I'd like to know where the Assembly is with this particular issue. Is there something, is there a proposal before you that we don't, the city doesn't know? At least, I don't know. I'd like to find out and get an update before we dive into this as to what the proposal might be, or in what format it is.
There was a discussion item on our work session last week on short-term rentals, and there was one proposal, Dave Johnson and Larry Ledoux proposed a moratorium on it. So that's what we're talking, and part of the discussion was that, we'd talked jointly since it was on the work session agenda, and then we have a follow-up. It's on our agenda for the 13th of February again.
So Scott, there was nothing formally written or proposed?
For this, no.
It was just discussion? Okay.
So, and then Dave has kind of laid out what he's thinking and his reasoning there, so. Terry, and then John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I had the pleasure of going to a breakout session at the most recent gathering of the Alaska Municipal League on just this subject, and we heard from a person who crunches the numbers about housing in Alaska. And it's true, what we heard during public comment was pretty accurate. The whole United States is in the same boat, basically, and it's more a matter of demographics than anything else. It is exactly as described, homes that used to have five people in them now have two. There are more housing in Alaska now than there ever has been, and even as compared to our population, but we still have a huge need for housing. And so, and he made the point that you're not going to solve your housing crisis by addressing short-term rentals, at least not statistically. But having said that, I don't say, I'm not saying it's not a worthwhile endeavor, but that was kind of a cautionary note that we heard. And then we heard from Crystal Nygaard, who's the Deputy Administrator of Wasilla, and they dove right into this. And when they sat down and had a bunch of discussions among themselves, among, you know, their administration and everyone who would have to, you know, the local representatives, and they came up with some pretty good, a pretty good permit, I think, that once they started talking about it, they thought about it, and they wanted every short-term rental individually permitted, non-transferable. Applicants must have a local content and local contact. You know, it all makes sense, you know, you can't just walk off from your short-term rental and not have anyone to get a hold of. And then they went on, they wanted you to file a site plan, have $1 million of insurance, occupancy info, is everyone over 21, septic information, acknowledged, understanding rules. They expect you to have a business license, a minimum amount of parking, an inspection from the state, maximum two persons per bedroom, minimum three-night stay, no exterior signs, but they want interior signs that shows emergency egress and things like that. Owner maintains three years of records at all times, they want the property maintained, clean and safe, no commercial events, they don't want it to have weddings and receptions and be an event, you know, site. Maximum number of permits and permits per household in both the locality and for the number of people, permits you could hold yourself, and then enforcement by code enforcement using fines. Permits could be revoked for non-compliance, no sales tax remission, no records, no local content, or having a public nuisance problem. The problem is, they, it's estimated they have somewhere between 1,100 and 1,500 short-term rentals, and they had two people show up and sign up and pay the $1,000 that they expected them to pay to have this because it scared everyone away. And then when they talked about it, well, what are we going to do? We have to do enforcement, and as Mr. Ledoux pointed out, enforcement's kind of tough. You have your one enforcement officer driving around in a pickup truck, banging on doors, being the boogeyman, you know, where's your three years of records? And basically, they said that the lessons that they learned was, you should make the permits more like conditional use permits, streamline the process, and so it's more of a checklist than a big pile of paperwork, and they think you should, they didn't engage the community first, they said that was a big mistake, they should have engaged the community and let them know what they had in mind, and actually market the process, have easy online tools when you roll it out, and avoid burdens and complex regulations that are just going to confuse people and scare people away. And, you know, they said that, they're still working on it, so they haven't finished yet, but they hadn't given up either. But I thought it was worthwhile to kind of share what they had gone through so far.
Yeah. Thank you, Terry. John, then Beau, then Annika.
Thank you. I didn't sit in on your, listen to your meeting, so this might sound like a really simplistic question, but what is the actual problem that the short-term rental discussion is trying to accomplish? Is it a housing shortage, affordable housing shortage? So this is just one piece, obviously, of the solution set. So I'm just warning, if you can even take this one piece as a standalone piece without concerning all the other factors, land codes, construction costs, lack of developers, and other things that might really be contributing to the housing problem. So, I mean, I don't, we as the city don't really have a whole lot to say on short-term rentals, don't have any code enforcement, other than possibly a business license for the use of sewer and water, but I think this is really just a piece of a much larger discussion. I know that KEDC received a $95,000 grant to create a housing action plan, I don't know where it is, in the process, but I think that would be a good part of the solution set, to look at all the components of a housing shortage, everything that goes to contributing to this, and we've heard, as Larry said, and I think others have said, you know, the impacts just on our ability to grow our economy. Even though our population's shrinking, we still can't maintain the fundamental pieces of our economy in terms of hiring teachers, hiring welders, or policemen, or firemen, because we don't have places to live, and there's multiple reasons. You know, just houses, the demographics of housing decreasing, the number of short-term rentals, the lack of buildable land, all these other, all these other factors. So just wanted to throw that out, that I think that we, for me anyway, I like to look at the broader picture and say, okay, where does this fit into it, and what are some of the other factors that are keeping us from being successful as a growing economy?
Thank you, John. Beau, then Annika.
Thank you. It's, this is a challenging topic, and I would encourage both municipalities to think about the wisdom we heard earlier in planning for long-term scenarios here, and so we have an immediate need for housing, there's no questioning that, and I rely on data and testimony. We've heard testimony and support and opposition to short-term rentals, but the fact remains, the cost of housing here is a barrier for entry for new families moving to Kodiak. They simply will not move here. We've heard real-world examples from people directly and from folks who represent large swaths of the community. The cost of housing is a barrier for entry. We all know that the number of short-term rentals is increasing drastically. I looked a week or so ago, took me a few minutes, and identified 160 short-term rentals on two websites during the off-season. Let's look at that again come July, August. I bet that number's going to be upwards of 200, if not more. The fact also remains that we are not building more houses. I think we keep chasing, what's the smoking gun here? Is it short-term rentals? Is it lack of land development, or resource development through land sales? It's a multifaceted problem, but currently, we are talking about this one component of the housing crisis, which is short-term rentals. We have a fixed housing inventory here that's not changing in the coming years, it's simply not. Doesn't matter how much land is released, so we need to think about, what do we prioritize right now? I agree that tourism is a vital component to our economy. Does it outweigh basic housing needs for all of the positions and jobs and small businesses we've discussed where people can't fill because they simply can't find housing? I don't think it does. It is important. I don't think anyone has suggested pulling the rug out from folks who rely on this income currently. I think most of us are proposing slowing it down. We need to understand how many homes are being used in this way, because how can we make adjustments without finding that out? I think there are robust licensing programs that have been shown to work in identifying and enforcing short-term regulations. So I encourage folks to continue down this path so we have a better grasp, but also thinking about the long term. I really appreciated that statement. What do we want our economy to look like? Do we want a transient-dominated economy where tourism rules all? How many jobs, long-term jobs, is that going to fill? How many families are going to be relying on that? Is that going to increase school enrollment? I don't think so. Is that going to, is that going to fix our outmigration and shift it the other way? It's not going to. Those who pay attention to how that sector of the economy works in coastal Alaska know that tourism is a transient economy largely. Sure, there's small, you know, there's instances where folks can live in that area and rely on that tourism income, but overall, I think we're putting the needs of tourism ahead of basic needs of any functioning community, so a bit long-winded there, but I encourage folks to think about what the long term looks like for Kodiak, and understanding this is a multifaceted problem. There is no one smoking gun, we have to look at all these different pieces together.
Annika?
Thank you. I have a question for the borough and then a comment. So on page 23 of our joint work session packet, there's a total count of short-term rentals. What percentage does that reflect of all the total houses in Kodiak? I was not able to come up with that number.
I'm not sure. Does anybody know?
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I guess that brings me to my point, is I think we all agree that housing is a problem and has been for a very long time, and when I look at this number of 69 rentals, supposedly, short-term rentals in the City of Kodiak, I'm like, wow, that sounds like a really big number, but how big is that number really? And so, a lot of points have been hit today, and I can agree with several of them, including many of the points that Beau touched on, where I don't frankly want to be in a town where tourism is the end-all, be-all. I don't want to be in a town like Hecacan in Juneau that gets just bombarded and invaded by cruise ships in the summertime and then flooded. Anyway, I want stability. As a local here, my grandparents came here in the '60s, and I want to raise children here, and I think housing, as Beau has touched on and others as well, it's a much larger issue. As someone who has bought a house in the last few years, it's a tough environment, it's very competitive. My husband and I have had, we're dual income, no children, stable government jobs, and we were outbid several times. It's rough, and it's, you kind of get your fists a little bloody metaphorically to get into a house, and it's nothing short of dumb luck that I was able to secure a house in the City of Kodiak. So I know firsthand how tough it is, but when I look at these numbers, I'm like, well, I don't think I'm quite bought in to this just yet. I'm glad that we're talking about it, and I hope that we could have several more discussions about housing as a whole, and I agree with John that short-term rentals is only one piece of that pie. It's, in terms of like, why do families not come here? I can tell you childcare is a big one, too. Why am I 28 years old, married for five years, no children? I can't find childcare, and I will not have children until I am certain that I can return to work and secure childcare, because quite frankly, I love my job and I'm not going to rest my ability to pay my bills on whether or not I can find a babysitter. That's just how it is. It's a reality, I've seen several of my friends go through, and I'm not willing to take the chance on that. I don't want to get too off-topic, but that just kind of drives back into my point. I don't want to get too off-topic, but that just kind of drives back into my point that it's a much larger issue than then just some locals trying to pad their income and help pay their bills with a short-term rental. So I look at this and I'm like, well, what's the overall percentage? How many people of these numbers on page twenty-three are like the public comments that we received where they are having an apartment out of their house versus corporations that are just padding their portfolios? I absolutely agree with Dave that I don't want to see corporations from out of state just buying up our properties. So I, I guess I just need more information. And I think that can go back to KEDC. And I think we just need to have a larger conversation as a community before moving forward on doing any legislation.
Thank you, Annika. I didn't feel you were off-base, so good discussion. Pat.
Well, definitely, there's more discussion needed on this, and it sounds like the borough has that on your agenda coming up. I'm going to encourage you to do so, and also think about, what, what is the purpose of this? Is it just to regulate who's there? I, I don't know what the purpose is, and I don't know what the outcome is. It's not that I'm against this, but if you're talking about the housing issue as a whole, this is just one sliver. Does this have a different purpose? I, I don't know. So I agree, I don't want our town to become like Ketchikan or Juneau either, but I would encourage the borough to continue this discussion, and maybe the city needs to as well, but it also needs to be opened up for the community to weigh in as well. And because there are different parts of our community and different people, as we've heard testimony tonight, who do use this for their income for them to stay here. So that's the other balance. It's a balancing act with this. So, but I would like more information as well, and understanding the entire purpose of this and the outcome. What is it to do?
One, one of the reasons for having this on the agenda was the joint work session, is we need to both be talking about it because one body shouldn't be doing one thing without having the other body involved. We need to be on the same page, or it's not going to work, period. So that's one of the things, you know, in answer to that. I saw Scott, and then John.
Well, one of the things we heard, I don't have any hard information on it, was that the short-term rentals were taking away the possibility of long-term rentals of the same property, and that there was a dearth of long-term rentals in Kodiak because of that. That is the case in other municipalities across the country. I think that one thing that we tend to forget, since we're an island in the North Pacific and not in the lower forty-eight, is that over the years, a number of changes in how houses are handled have occurred. There was the Our Old House TV show with Bob Vila or something, who renovated an old house and sold it for more money. When I was a student, we moved into a house that was old, and we did that kind of stuff. And the rental was lower because it hadn't been rehabilitated. Then there are the, the opportunities that companies like Zillow are using to purchase houses that are for sale and bidding them up ridiculously. There was one that I read about in North Carolina where the house was for sale for two eighty-nine. They bid it up to four eighty-nine and then tried to sell it for five eighty-nine. So increasing the price of houses and thereby removing the opportunity for families with less money to be able to move into that area. I think the real solution to these problems is to deal at the federal level with using houses as an investment. I think that's maybe not the right way for businesses to operate if you want to have houses for everybody, but that's something that the feds have to deal with. I'm not one of them. So, but I do think that one of the reasons for dealing with short-term rentals is if they're not short-term, perhaps they're long-term, and that offers a place for people like our first responders to be able to move into town. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. John?
Thank you. I don't have any proposed solutions to any of this, so that's my first disclaimer, but I do appreciate the borough putting this on the agenda, but I would hope that both bodies, the city and the, and the assembly, can actually put this back on your agenda, and that we'll get together really soon, so we'll just talk about it. I mean, I remember, I think maybe Dan, might have been mayor, there was a housing study done, and here we are, ten years later, just talking about housing. So the worst thing we can do is talk about this and feel good about it, and then do nothing. So I really want to put a timeline on taking further action, what those action steps are, so we quit talking about it and find, just work towards some solutions. And there's multiple solutions because there's multiple factors that cause this problem, but let's get a grip on it and let's start doing something. We've Coast Guard expansion, we've got businesses that can't find employees. There's a number of reasons why our economy is actually being strangled by lack of housing. So there's an economic impact to doing nothing. So again, I, I hope we in the city can put on the agenda really soon, you know, bring in whoever we need to talk to, same thing for the borough, then come back and reconvene and work together jointly versus singularly, because we'll be a lot more effective, whether we're lobbying on a federal level, a state level, if we can come together as a community and, and really push this where it needs to be pushed, I think we'll be far more successful. But I'd like to see some milestones set for future development. Thanks.
Go ahead, Bob.
Thanks, Scott. Just as a little historical perspective, we talked about this over a year ago, right? Housing was on the agenda. And just to let you know what the city's done, you know, that was a major impetus for us when we started to look at the land over on Salif, and it was one of the key holes that we started making decisions to help let Rural Cap get involved. And so it was an attempt and a, kind of emphasizing what John said, to make something happen. So, and hopefully, that'll come to fruition, and there'll be another dozen homes there. You know, right now, we're going through our near-island plan and starting to look, you know, what's that look like, right? So housing is still one of the key holes that we look at, you know, when we start to decide, you know, whether we're going to sell land, keep land, what are we going to do? What's it going to look like? So, but I think everyone here is, is going, well, how does that affect the ability of housing and all the problems that have been mentioned here? So, and, and I agree with you, it's affordability. And I do think we need to think out of the box, you know? When I moved here, it was just, if you could, you didn't even get a bedroom. If you got a couch, you know, I was happy to get the couch and then the laundry room. So, and I, so, you know, Councilman Davidson has mentioned, you know, tiny homes. And sometimes it goes right over your head, but I know, driving down I-15 in Salt Lake, you go by an area south of Salt Lake, and you look off to the, to east, and there's a whole row of tiny homes all along the freeway. And it's like, I think there's things we can do. I think a lot of people that are, you know, I'm concerned about the, you know, the crew members and the fishermen, and, you know, most of these guys aren't bringing all their families up for season. You know, tourism is seasonal, but in a lot of ways, so is fishing. You know, kind of the backbone of our, of our town. So we need to have, we need to have, other than just one size fits all, we need to look at all the different availability. And I think we can do it. It's, the city's looking to figure out ways to make our land useful to do that. I would encourage the borough to do that. There's a lot of land here, you know? Maybe it's a joint project where, you know, the city and the borough have to get together for utilities, and, you know, there's properties that are, you know, it's going to take us both to make this work. But, but until we exhaust some of these possibilities, I think restricting, you know, as Ken Burns talked about, as Dan talked about, just to restrict current people from making a living and when there's a downturn in the economy, you know, it's going to, it's going to create a whole new hardship, you know, and possibly, you know, people leaving to support in our town. But, but I would encourage us to find land that we can work together and set a timeframe and, and throw these things up there on a board, and, you know, I, I think we can do that together, so, thanks.
Charlie, go ahead.
Thank you. One idea I was tossing around in my head was having a multi-story building built for young people that are professionals that, that reverse, that they have for older people here, where you have to be of a certain age. If you could, if both entities could work together for a structure, or a structure as an experiment, to where you could lease it out to professional young people that would be willing to commit to come here, because we're, we're so critically short of, of, of our first responders in that. And, and if we don't, if, if we could do something like that, that's just an idea I've been tossing around, but that, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
Just a thought. This is, I guess, my fifth year cumulatively on the Borough Assembly, but, you know, we always, we have a lot of brain power here. And it seems like it's been really difficult for us to come up with a cohesive plan. Some great suggestions, but when it comes to actually putting it all together into a plan, I think people have said the solution is multifaceted. And how do we distill things down to where we can really make a difference instead of talking about ideas? And we should do this, but it never happens. There's a lot of good reasons for that, so this isn't a complaint about anybody. But bureaucracies move so slow. I mean, I came on the assembly two years ago with my goal of selling land. We haven't sold any. Okay? And Dan and I, when I was on the assembly last time, met with the number-one developer in the state of Alaska, who has built about everything there is. He lives on Kodiak, by the way, to bring some of these people in and talk to us about what we need to do if we want development. But how do we tease down and actually make a difference instead of talking about it? Because I think the community depends on us. And we talk about things, but it's very difficult, and this, what we're talking about tonight is, we've seen is very, very complex, and has pros and cons, and, but we haven't really developed a mechanism to make it happen. Yes, we need to work with the city, and the borough need to work together, but how do we do that? And so that we actually have a product that we can talk with our community about, or land sales? I mean, I really appreciate what the city did, you know, making that land available, by the way, it's editorial, but how do we actually make a difference? And it seems like that's what the city and borough should really be talking about. How do we tease out what we really want to do and actually make it happen? And, and I don't have an answer to that, but I think the public depends on us to find an answer so that we can actually do some things. Anyway, thank you.
Pat is next.
So I think we've gone full circle here, from this particular issue to the housing issue in our community. And perhaps what we need is a facilitator to guide us through this discussion where we have outcomes and a timeline, because we can look at this, we can look at studies, and I don't know what KEDC is doing, but it's multi-layered. We have two housing authorities in town. One is moving ahead with land that the city is giving or selling to them. A contractor came to town a couple of months ago from Kenai and had a community meeting. I don't know if anyone was there for that, willing to come here and build houses as he, that group had done, that company had done in Kenai. Maybe we need to contact, I mean, I did contact that person after the, the presentation. So it's multifaceted, as Larry said, it's multi-layered, but I think overall, we need to look at some outcomes with this, these two groups working together and having a facilitator. I don't want to be meeting every quarter or even more often than that and rehashing without having some guidance, because we can be all over the board, but it's a housing issue, and why can't we just focus on that? This is part of it. There are other elements as well. And I think we need some help in, from the community as well as the facilitator to getting to that point, so we have some timelines and some solutions.
Thank you. Just a minute, John. I'm going to go ahead and say a few things. Last night, we had the lands committee met, and there were some recommendations. Last, last month, there was a four-lot subdivision out at, at Island Lake that is, we approved the minutes, and that'll be moving forward to the assembly, because they'll have to make a decision on going to basically declare the land surplus and then going through a rezone process and then the subdivision. The other thing that we looked at last night was some of the property that the borough has on Beaver Lake Drive and Salif Lane. And what the recommendation of the lands committee is, is to split that up into three tracks, and then look at requesting proposals for development of that. And basically, that has to be, that property has to be surplus and then rezoned before we, you know, as part of the, the process on requesting proposals, to just see what the, the interest is. And that's why one of the, the smallest parcel would lend itself to about four or five residential lots in that seventy-two-hundred square foot or larger. And second parcel is, has potential for about, I think, seven or eight lots that would be in that same, same category, be larger than seventy-two-hundred. The third parcel is going to need some road sewer and water brought into on Salif, off of Salif Lane there. The access for driveways is too steep, so there's a road that ends up having to be built. That has the potential of either ten, I'll say, in the eight-thousand-square-foot-sized lot, or sixteen to twenty in the thirty-six-hundred, small lots of divisions, as we talk about smaller homes that would fit on there. So, so that's going to be, that'll move forward after those minutes are adopted next month, and we get a little more information there. But Rich is on the lands committee, ex-officio from the city. We have Scott Smiley and Steve Ames from the assembly. So, so that's what, and then on planning and zoning is Sarah Frazier from the borough side of planning and zoning, and Tracy Craig from the city side on there. So those are people on there. So we're trying to make some recommendations and look at what the direction of the lands committee is. The next thing they want to take a, a look at, which is going to be a more of a longer look at, is the, I'll say, the salvage logging area that took place out at Chinniak, and then also the Clarny Hills subdivision, also known as a cannonball field. So, the, just to give you all a little bit of an idea, that took place last night. So, any, so John, with that, I'll give you the four.
Just a brief comment. So maybe to, part of what Mayor Branson said and Larry Ledoux is, I think, I think the one thing would be helpful for us as a city, maybe you for the assembly, would be, we need to own the problem. And we talk around it, where people expect us to do something, but possibly awaiting somebody else to take action. I think we have a responsibility, as really the only organized entity that owns land, to take a strong leadership role in this. It could be very similar to what happened on Salif, where the city owned the property, entities, two entities came to us to look to buy the land. We ultimately had, what I hope will be a very successful public-private partnership, but it could have evolved to that. But the first thing is saying, okay, we have a role in fixing this, not just to talk about it, but to take action in fixing this. So I, I'm hoping I can convey, again, to our city, my city council members, that we need to own the problem, and hopefully, the borough can do the same thing.
Bo, after Pat. Pat's first.
I just have, one quick question is that, you know, I'm looking, what you just described with the lands committee and exchanging that information makes me hopeful, but we need to understand what our resources are and our assets and have that exchange so that when we gather again and hopefully move forward in a facilitated way, okay, these are our assets, this is the problem, as John was saying, and this is what's going on, like with the housing authority. But we, we know that you're doing forward on that and have a timeline, so I'm all about plans, but timelines and having outcomes, and that's what I'd like to see happen with these discussions, not just with these, this, these two groups, but also with the community, because other people might have ideas as well.
Bo?
Thank you. To, to bring us back on topic with short-term rentals, I would encourage the public to just keep an eye on future agenda items. This topic's going to keep coming up. There's another item that will be coming up in the not-too-distant future to look at how we can address short-term rentals. So I would encourage the public to keep an eye on these. And a reminder that the Borough Assembly meetings are, they're, they're not only streamed on YouTube, but recorded. on YouTube, but recorded, so you don't have to physically be here to see what we're talking about and hear what we're talking about. Tell everyone that, that these are on YouTube and publicly available anytime you want to watch it. I watch some city stuff and listen to things in my PJs on Saturday morning drinking coffee. So you don't have to be here at the meetings. I know it's really difficult to do, but I would, I would encourage, I'm, I would hope to see more public involvement for this topic. There, there's folks who it affects directly, and I appreciate that testimony because it does help me think about how to approach this issue. But I encourage folks to, to pay attention to our meetings. We share it as much as we can through social media, the Borough website. I know the city council does a great job advertising, but please know that we're expand, we've expanded beyond that. We are on YouTube. That seems to be a common resource for folks to disseminate information. Please watch these meetings. Tell folks about it that you know are interested in these topics. We need more public engagement. I agree that I don't like to make decisions in a vacuum, but sometimes we're forced to if we don't have other input. And, and we need help from the public to give us additional perspective. I'm certainly biased in my opinion. I, I think all of us can admit that to an extent, but we need you to weigh in as the community. We've heard from a very small fraction of the community on this topic, very passionate voices about it, whether pro or against short-term rentals. But I think the more input we receive, the better we'll feel about our decision-making. And I agree, it needs to happen sooner than later.
Thank you. Annika?
Thanks. I did want to circle back around to something that was touched on earlier is that KEDC is supposed to be putting a housing plan together. So I would be in favor of circling back around to, for one, the short-term rentals discussion again with more data, if there, what's available. I know that KEDC has a report or a study, whatever you want to call it. They have information on short-term rentals as well. So I feel like the more that we have in our packet, the better. But also, I just totally lost my train of thought. I'm sorry. Let me find it again real quick. Come back around. I would like to hear an update from KEDC. That was the other part. I'm sorry. It's been a long day.
No, understand.
I, I would like to hear an update from KEDC and see where they're at with that, with that housing plan. Because, again, as has been said over and over again, we don't want to keep kicking this can down the road. And I think it's just, we need to get all the right people in the room together. Thanks.
Well, I think we all would like to see that since it's been requested. Jared?
Thank you. A lot of great things being thrown out there tonight. For me, I think at, at its core, as was mentioned in the citizen comments, these short-term rentals are being operated as businesses. And I think Dave alluded to this, they should be regulated in the same way as businesses. And I think that's one reason why we wanted to bring this to the city, you know, is to look at this from a business licensing kind of permitting point of view also, not just as a piece, a small piece, or however big the piece may be, in the grand scope of Kodiak's housing economy. But I think one thing that we can look at now, right, is the permitting and licensing of, of the, of these businesses. I'm, I'm still torn on a couple of things, you know, with a cap or moratorium. I think we might need to look at the owner occupancy requirement and if it's a possible violation of the Commerce Clause in the Constitution that we have right now. And so I, so I think there's still some things to look at with, with what the Borough was looking at. But, but at its core, for me, I think this is something that the Borough needs to address with, with the city's assistance and their experience with business licensing. And I did just a really quick census, census search. There are 5,862 housing units as of 2023 in Kodiak, but that includes single-family, that includes apartments, that includes rooms for rent and ADUs. And so I think if we use Bo's number, that comes to about 3%. If you look at just the single-family resident, residential homes, this is according to the Kodiak Island Housing Authority, there are 2,252 single-family residencies in Kodiak. So that would mean about 7%, I would suppose-ish. So I think anywhere between 3% and 7% of, of all residences in Alaska, in Alaska and Kodiak. Now, that's just that number in a vacuum. We don't know how, you know, what that looks like compared to other communities of similar sizes. But, but I think that's a good probably piece of data for us to, for us to look at. With that, I got to go pick up my daughter from youth group. I will be right back.
Thank you. Pat?
Well, we, the city has not discussed this in licensing. So getting back to that, but there's a bigger problem here with the housing, is that we can get that on our agenda to discuss, and we haven't done that. So we will do that.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else like to say anything at this time? I think, oh, Bob, go ahead.
Just one more thing. The city did a, a report on the sewer and water capacity, where like near-island has capacity in different, but different areas. So I think the Borough could get that from the city of where there is excess capacity right now and where it's strained, so.
Thank you for that information. Any other comments? All righty. I think we'll both be looking at this, both bodies will be looking at it in the near future. I would like to also thank the residents that came out and testified under citizens' comments in regards to this. Thank you for that. So we'll move on to the next item, which is the ZAC Foundation Water Safety Camp Discussion. This is something that Pat Branson and myself were invited out to the Coast Guard Base this last summer. And it was a fantastic experience. There was roughly 100 kids involved, most from the road system, but some from around the villages. And the ZAC Foundation, Pat, I'll let you explain a little bit. I know you want me to. I think.
I want something you want me to.
Go ahead, Amy.
We don't want to put anyone on the spot around here. The ZAC Foundation was a water safety camp for youth ages five to nine. And as Mayor Art mentioned, the mayors were introduced to the program out at the Coast Guard Base, and both thought it was a really great program for our island community. Crystal Conchalo, who is a Coast Guard spouse and ex-Coastie, is the program's chief for base Kodiak Morale Welfare and Recreation. In your packet tonight, you're going to find the details about the program. She lays out the cost and what she was able to provide with the grant of $12,500. We put it on the agenda tonight so that we can check for interest from the council and the Assembly if we want to do something like this. Actually, Mayor Branson and Josie and I just had a conversation yesterday about if we thought we could take on something like this on our own, just using our own resources here at the pool. Mm-hmm. And Mayor Art has been informed, too. So it's going to be something that we can maybe accomplish with an agreement like we have with the school district for our gyms, ballfields, and pool. So we're hoping to look for support and to see if that's something that both of these bodies are interested in and provide a, a great service for the community.
Excellent, Amy. Thank you. So basically, it was to get it before both bodies. It'd be something we could share in. The, as it was stated, the cost, I think they incurred was roughly 12,500. That the school district was involved, Canada was involved, you know, so it's going to probably take a little bit more money. We can get some of the information from the ZAC Foundation. They don't, they're not interested in doing it up here every year, but they are interested in helping wherever they can on there. So, Pat?
Well, I think we need to find out what goes on with water safety programs within the city and at the Coast Guard now. I agree, I think that we can put something together with the Borough, Coast Guard, and the city. I think it's a well worthwhile program. Let's see what assets we have now. I mean, we had Alyssa here talking about Kingfishers, they're a resource, and see what we could do to put something together. Because water safety is most important.
Yeah, and then follow up with that in the near future. Sounds great.
Yeah, I, I think that maybe we could just have the mayors and the managers sit down and talk about this, put something together and bring it back.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, just to briefly express my enthusiastic support for this program and programs like this. I mean, I was a swimmer my whole life. And I'll never forget when I learned to swim. It changes your life. It's, it's a lifelong skill that you, you know, that you have from then on. And we live in a water community, you know, water safety and, and our kids being able to swim, it's a big deal.
I was one of those unfortunate kids that almost drowned. I still have memories of that when I was only eight years old at the time. So I just think that this is a wonderful program that we should definitely pay each week.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other comments on that? That'll be coming back. We'll work on that and bring that back here, too. So with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is discussion for joint advocacy for restaurant and eating place licenses, the REPL. Now, earlier, I'm going to say nine o'clock today, the AMCO Board started their meeting, and they finished their meeting. I don't know, that's why Amy was late, is because she was testifying before them tonight on it. And so I'd like to go ahead and turn this over to her at this time.
That board was nice enough to put all four of our issues together in one area. It just happened to be on page 25 of 26 of the agenda, so it just took a minute to get there. Once we arrived at that, there were two different licenses that the board was looking at. One license, the city had protested, and then the board came back and said that they weren't going to allow them to protest. And then I wanted to protest, protest that. And then tonight, they told me I wasn't allowed to protest that because it was going to go to a different kind of hearing. Then we moved on to the second license. The second license, the Borough put in a protest that it exists at all because they didn't meet the standards. And then on the next section, we protested that it would be, if it was allowed, that it would be allowed to move into its second year. And then the third thing on that same license was the transfer of the license from one business who we don't think should be allowed to have it in the first place to a new business. We were so confused. They were so confused about having two forms of government being able to protest on the same licenses. That's not, apparently, that's not common. And what they see, it's just one or the other. So when they said, oh, well, the city protested this, so you can't, Noah and I were like, oh, really? Look at Alaska State statute four point, you know? And we were pointing out the deadlines and the dates and the regulations around that. And they just, kind of, there was just silence, and you can tell that there was confusion. So what's going to happen around those two licenses is the second license transfer is open for protest until May 9th. So we're going to have a special meeting just for, sorry, March. Thank you. Very important.
The other M month.
The other M month. Yes, March 9th. So they're going to hold a special meeting after March 9th to deal with those two licenses and Kodiak. That would be a really good time for us to express that we are at the number. We have four that are available by our population. A lot of the meeting today was about people applying for seasonal licenses for people that just wanted to use them six months out of the year. But a lot of communities had more than their allotment, like most communities have more than their allotment. The problem that we're facing is they want the Borough to have a police force, which we don't have, so we can't ask for more. And they want the city to have planning powers, which they don't have, so they can't have more. So we really need to work out something with them that shows we're working together. It's the same people, same area, and we deserve more licenses, not only for tourism, but just for the residents who live here. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have about that. You'll see in your packet that the city already has a resolution for more licenses and the email correspondence that came around that. And Nova will be our expert on that way more than Amy will be.
Thank you. Amy, did you get the sense that there was any use at all, any way that they could look at the statute and say, well, maybe we'll let you jointly apply for these extra REPLs? After all, is it just going to be a legislative fix?
I, what I found is that we ask the Assembly to vote by the rules, right? We say, do not let your emotion come in. This board does not follow that. They were very, Sandra, they were, they were very emotional. And they were like, well, it feels like they were trying to do the right thing, and I think this. And so it was very frustrating, and Nova and I were calling and texting back and forth, that we were just asking them to follow the rules because we're asked to follow the rules. And I just said, look, if you're, if you're going to put both the city and the Borough through all these processes, and we have all these rules and all this step we have to follow, and we get this far, and I spend from 9:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. watching your meeting, and you're not going to follow the rules? Like, why are we even bothering? And so that caused just a big silence. And then some, it was someone's idea, like, oh, maybe we should take more of a look at this. So they are so far behind, Mr. Haynes, that they don't even know what came in on what date and how long it's taking for us to get stuff. So they can show that a license transfer application came in in 2023, but the Borough didn't get that until January of 2025. So there, there is a big gap. And I tried to express the frustration around their timeline. And if they can't figure out what their timeline is, how are we supposed to? So I caused a little bit of problem, but I think that special meeting for us is going to give us more time to kind of amp up our knowledge and provide better, stronger timelines. And we can't be the only community that's frustrated with the timeline and how long it's taking to get information. And so very long answer to say, yes, I think they will consider what that looks like to have joint REPL licenses because that is the only way we can serve the amount of people that are really on the road system using our, our restaurants and our places that would want those. It's not just the bubble that is the city population. So it's everyone who lives on the road system. So I think that's going to be a good discussion with them.
Josie, you had a comment?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So through this process of being denied for additional REPLs, in your packet, you have a resolution the council passed requesting 10 additional REPLs. So through the process of being denied, we have learned that many other boroughs and municipalities, specifically Matsu Borough and Ketchikan, are also experiencing the same denials. So we've, are working cooperatively, both with our city lobbyist, trying to get a meeting with AMCO staff and the Alaska Municipal League, and to see if we can work out a joint application, so the city and the Borough would have a joint application. This may require change in state law, and Senators, our Senator Stevens has been, we've spoken, we reached out to him, and he would, might be interested in carrying a bill on our behalf to close this loophole. So when we go down for AML in a couple weeks, we'll sit down and have a discussion about it. And hopefully more to come. Thanks.
Thank you, Josie. Pat?
Josie said what I was going to say.
Okay. Anyone else have any other comments on this? So, Bo?
Just a, a brief statement to members of the community who are looking to add these licenses or, or take these licenses for their businesses to serve the community and, and the tourism industry. I really appreciate your patience, and I understand the frustration behind this process. I'm still learning as we go. I'm, I'm encouraged by our managers and, and mayors in pursuing a joint permitting process or request, and, and hopefully we can gain some ground there. And I just encourage patience for those who have been just struggling with the process. I can only imagine how, how much sleep they're losing. So I just want folks to know that we are, we are hoping to progress in this area, and I'm, I'm grateful for what our managers have done so far.
Okay. Any other comments on that? On the agenda here, next meeting scheduled, the city will be chairing the next one, so we'll work together and try and set that up depending upon where some of this information comes on, on rentals. And then we'll also be looking for future discussion items that anybody may be interested in. Don't have to have that right now, but you can get it to us. So when we get together, we can look at those. So with that, going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting with the exact time, 8:20 p.m. Thank you all for attending. Good night.
Well, that wasn't too painful.